Okay. Welcome to the Town of Oakville's Planning Board meeting of July 13th, 2015. First up is a review and approval of minutes. I have it on June 22nd, 2015. Motion to approve the minutes at the June meeting. Second. Motion second, any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is the July 7th, 2015. Joint meeting with the Village Planning Board. So, I'll go backwards and vote on that. I'll make a motion for approval of the minutes. Oh, we only have three members there, so.
Right, they really can't say.
Yeah. If you're ready, you can vote on it. That's the rule set that we've been working on. Any other discussion, Adam? All those in favor? At this point out, we will have the configuration of public hearing of the property for next meeting. Okay. There are no public hearings tonight. Public comment session, anybody wishing to make any comments in the public comment session? Mike?
Hi, welcome to the Town of Oakville. So, just two things about the transuts and application. I sent you all via Kelly over the weekend, two different emails. One is an alternative concept for removing, for avoiding removal of, uh, yeah, avoiding removal of the slip lane. It includes the idea of putting a bike path through the property and then connecting it up to the property just to the north and then providing a crosswalk, paths, and good noise. The second component is concerned related to pedestrians trying to cross that five minute road, walking from south to north and to south. And the idea there, we need to have a signal specifically slip lane that would only be best reactivated. So, I don't know what their plans are. Crosswalk signaling goes to the doorway, full stop, pedestrians will cross. But by adding a signal specifically in the slip lane, it was only activated if somebody pushed the crosswalk button, they'd have to take care of that issue. I noticed at the last meeting that Peter mentioned about people possibly driving through, and that's something he referred to me, and I'm confident that cyclists would also do the same thing. And so, I'm suggesting that you actually create a legitimate bike path to, uh, to be safer and more important. Anyway, the reason that I sent this to your attention is that I was able to talk to the bicycle pedestrian coordinator of DOT, her name is Lucy Mandela. I mentioned her in the email, and she said that basically for projects of DOT or working on, they like to have a single point of contact, and you all are that. So, rather than getting a discussion with me, she said please send it along to them, and if you gradually consider it, perhaps you'll include it in the conversation with DOT. What I sent you is just what I said, it's not meant to be a schematic or anything like that. The second thing is, I understand that you all are aware, and I obviously can tell you that the additional real estate on this site is being advertised now as commercial real estate. It's depending on which ad you look at, it's either 4,500 square feet or 7,000 square feet, much bigger than the 2,000 square feet you all spoke about at your last meeting and the incremental impact. So, I bring that to your attention, you already know about it, but I think it has at least two potential impacts. One is, it seems to me that that sort of makes clear this issue about avoiding segmentation, and that's a pretty substantial increase, and I hope that the applicant will take that into account or be asked to take into account as they revise their DAF. The other is that I had also mentioned to you about the town's zoning definition of impervious surface, and that it only impacts, that it only includes buildings, it doesn't include parking lots. I may not be saying this exactly right, but, uh, he's preferred what I said at the last time. But I'm hoping that if you all consider or seriously asking the town, you want to revise that, because this is a good example where there might be, their ability to build out to whatever 50% or 85%, um, the business zone, um, might make a big difference to anyone, um, this, uh, the definition of the property. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else wishing to make a public comment? Okay, we'll close that session. We're gonna go into application reviews, Bloomberg. Go ahead, Sidle. You want to wait till the end?
Yep, what I could do is I'll talk to you separately, so.
I'm gonna recuse.
Right, but I'll talk to you when I'm going to talk to them.
Okay.
Now for the minutes, Adel, you recused yourself, and Ray is an alternate, is sitting in.
Is it Lynn?
Yeah, Lynn.
Lynn, Lynn is, is the old head for one project, and the other is, on the list is, that project is still somewhere in the other one. Okay? So, through the back, then you have an open meeting for another alternate. Okay?
All right.
All right. Come on up. No challenges, we're gonna do this. Okay.
Is that okay to set this here? I'm sorry to put it on a, uh, in his old, who are you? My name is Anine Travis, I'm a licensed mechanic carpenter, and this is Liz Elkin, the owner of Bloom and her husband Matt. And so, what we're here for today is Liz is purchasing this property on 25 North Ohioville Road for us to consolidate all of the operations to one location. Currently, we have offices in our house, and, you know, and then we have offices, our van storage and tool storage at the barn, which is behind Water Street Market. So, we want to consolidate it all in one location. This property came up for sale, it seemed like a perfect fit, so, um, so I can give you the specifics. Currently, it's a single-family home, it's about 1,400 square feet, 1.37 acres. We plan on proposing a two-way driveway into the site with one-way circulation through the parking lot out. There's parking for 25 cars, four van parking spaces, because the vans are a little bit bigger than a car. We would also like to locate a dumpster, and we're gonna put a door at the back of the garage. We're gonna use the garage for tool storage, like we use the barn at Water Street. Our offices are gonna be all consolidated in the house area, and, um, we're gonna save all the large existing trees. There's a very large tree line to the back, we're not going anywhere back there. We have to remove a few hemlock and spruce trees, which are right here, unfortunately. They're really grown together, but we plan on, you know, sprucing up all the landscaping, you know, eventually as, as we go. The stone patio will remain, the existing asphalt drive will remain, so that we can have access to the garage on both sides. So, let's see, what else we got? Just, I want to get a quote. We're gonna add approximately 0.32 acres of gravel area. We are going to actually propose rain gardens for the areas in the green areas islands and parking air, parking lot. We're gonna pitch the grade for the gravel into the parking area, the back. Part of the lot is very flat, we can, I forgot, I wanted to give you guys pictures, actually, because that was something that Dave had mentioned. So, you can see an idea of what all the, um, what the existing structures look like. We are in a light industrial zone, and there are a myriad of uses on North Ohioville Road up to there. You can see from this oblique view that, um, there is quite a large greenhouse operation just down the street, and then there's some auto parts, and the lot to the north of us is, I'm not sure what's going on there, to be perfectly honest, but.
Looks like they were logging, right?
It looks like logging to me, it looks like a lot of wood.
They're good.
Yeah, looks like.
They're all back here in a bunch of logs.
There's a picture of here, just to show that.
And we just, Liz just took those pictures today, so they're very current.
Just a few hours ago.
So, you can see the house is a cedar-sided house, so we're gonna keep it all the same. There's views across the street to the sewer treatment plant. It's very wide open in the front. You can see from, on the second page, that this is the top picture, is the view from the patio area to the back.
Same here.
So, looking back, so that would be basically the parking area. And then Liz was standing out in the back, and then took a picture back towards the house, which is actually, you know, the, the tree is so large here, right at this patio area, such a fabulous feature actually to have on a site, that, um, I anticipate lots of lawn shot there, it's gonna be nice. But it's, it's a really wonderful thing to save all these large trees, they're very, very large, and, and really an asset to have on a site like this. That is the, on the third page, the top sheet is the site to the north, and the bottom photo is the, the vacant site, which is right next to us to the south, and then there's a large garage structure adjoining that one. On the last page is a picture of the garage, which is a cinder block garage, and that shows a shed at the rear. We are going to be removing the shed, it's very dilapidated, it's in very bad shape. So, we're gonna be taking that down, as well as an existing coop that used to be in the back, and some fencing, it's actually kind of in this.
And dog fencing.
And there's, yes, there's dog fencing, and also, uh, there's remnants of an old vegetable garden way in the back, yeah. So, we're gonna be taking those all out, and, you know, cleaning it up, and obviously making it look better than it does right now, so. So, I guess, I don't know, do you have any questions? Did I, did I cover?
Well, that's, um, you guys have some more questions, and I have some more. And this is the planning board applicant, are you gonna do a, if they're familiar with the parking situation?
Well, it's a gravel parking lot, which will actually allow for, it's, it's not paved, because we didn't want to have to design stormwater detention facilities, even though this would probably be a really optimal site to do that on, but it's gonna be completely gravel, and also the rain gardens, we anticipate, they should be big enough to really capture those, um, any potential runoff, we get a pitch going in the right direction. We can also, if we, if we need to have additional areas, we do have a few spots adjacent to the parking area that we could use for additional rain garden area, or slight depressions. You know, it's like, just like a basic, um, saucer, that's basically how they're always designed.
So, I, yeah, I didn't realize anything's like gravel parking.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it's like gravel parking.
It does, it does.
I'm sorry. In the, in the back, I'm sorry, let me just point out one more thing, in the back, um, in case we need additional storage area in the future, uh, we'd like to try and put a shed in the back, that's why we wanted to put it on the site plan at this point, as well as a sign up front. We're gonna have a sign announcing that we're Bloom Fine Gardens, and Liz just reworked the logo, so we're hoping that the sign people will be able to, you know, give us a really nicely designed sign for that. I'm sorry, do you mean to interrupt, I'm sorry?
Obviously, it looks like it's too interesting.
Yes, um, I, I currently am in discussion with the highway department about, um, the, we need a new highway permit, obviously, for a new driveway, and I was, until we get through this part, the first meeting, and I can tell them, yes, we went to a meeting, and we're scheduled for a public hearing, or whatever, that I figured that that's when I would submit the highway permit, entrance permit, and talk to the highway superintendent at that point. They said that they would determine whether or not a drainage pipe was gonna be necessary underneath the proposed driveway at that time, and then we'd go out and look at it. We do have an existing catch basin right in the front yard, and it goes across the street, and I believe it empties out past the sewer treatment plant on the north side of the water plant.
My second question is the, uh, one parking thing, is that handicap parking, or?
It actually could be, because it's so flat right there, but gravel isn't normally considered, um, an ADA approved material. That is a good point, we currently don't have any handicapped employees, but that doesn't mean that we could.
Doesn't matter.
No, no, I, I understand that, I do, I understand that. Um, it certainly could be, it's a, it's a long space, and it's very close to, um, getting into the house, it's only two steps up to the deck there, and, um, and I believe the deck is flush with the back door.
Is the house handicap accessible?
There are two steps up in the, in the back, and there's four steps in the front, so I guess that that's technically no.
I think practically no, too.
Yeah.
It's everything, not currently.
We didn't realize that.
You might want to consult the building inspector about the handicap requirements.
So, are you having meetings with potential customers?
Not planning on that. We usually, we usually meet on-site, because, you know, at the customer's house, so we can walk the plan.
But just, just because it's gonna be an office, that's really, that's what the building inspector make sure.
Sure.
Whatever co-requirements for an office, I'm not there.
What is the existing law requirement?
There's a lot of setbacks, issues.
As you can see, there's one five-foot setback on the side yard, but this is, uh.
There's, um, the lot frontage is supposed to be 100 feet, we have 61.46 feet, um, the front yard setback is supposed to be 50 feet, and, um, we have 29. Here's the thing, this is, when we had the survey worked up, this, the, our property line ends up being almost on the entire other opposite side of Ohioville Road, which is actually a little crazy. So, he put the property line assumed right away based on 25 feet off the center line of Ohioville Road, which places the property line, you know, a good eight to 10 feet within our property from the edge of pavement, which seems kind of about the right location, but.
Can you just clarify the deed description that you've got with the, so it is possible that you do all underneath the road for that property?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, if you're, if you're going to relocate the property line, the town typically would request that you offer dedication of the land underneath the road to the town?
We're, we're not really rewriting the deed, if, if that's something that would be required of us. I s, I said that the surveyor had projected the right of, assumed right-of-way line at that point.
Which is telling you that's where it is, right?
Well, not according to the deed, but.
The surveyor didn't reference the deed?
Of course it did.
So, how did?
The bear, with all the bearings and distances, there's only four sides on the project site, and it's, it's a, it's a fluke, I think, when things end up being, you know, down the middle of roadways, or on the other side of roadways.
Who did the, well, the town, the engineer, the town engineer?
Dave Dipper.
Okay.
Did the survey.
Dave can tell you whether, but typically the town would request, you know, offer dedication of the property underneath the roadway.
Sure, will we get that in writing, or is that something that?
You'll probably get in comments from the town engineer.
Okay.
Just so.
Because we got, um, I don't, I don't know, do we have a formal letter from the town engineer?
No, because he was running out on vacation, he sent me that, um, email, I was trying to find it, but anyway, but I wanted you to be aware of it before you came to the meeting, that's some of the comments that he would have had in a formal letter. So, it just helps you, okay, these are the issues that he's seen coming up, let me see what they are, let me see if I can address them, um, I didn't think there was any.
We, we ran through it.
Yeah.
Yes.
It wasn't anything earth-shattering.
No, that's why I ran out and brought the photos. It was on his list, he thought it would be good for you to see it, and, um, yeah, I think that we're prepared to answer most of the things that were in his email.
The thing that concerned me, though, is that because it was sent in a memo, and there was nothing in formal writing, are we going to expect additional comments and not get them to resubmit in time? That's what I'm concerned about.
Um, we'll get that up into a, into a memo, but I have some other comments, and we'll have comments when I just go forward on it, and we'll give you a copy of the comments that raise at this, at this meeting. And those are the questions that come up that need to be addressed for us to go through it, so.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Parking spaces, what are they going to be used for? Is the size of the house going to comply with occupancy of commercial property to number of employees?
Do you want to answer that, or do you like?
You can answer.
I have it, so, um, most of our employees, the majority, are not office staff, they're gardeners. So, they'll park in the parking lot, and they'll hop in the vans, and they, they won't even go into the house, yeah. So, we have, um, an office staff of about four. Yeah, we have four veterans.
But I also want to clarify that, uh, we do no lawn mowing, there's not gonna be any service or maintenance of vehicles on the property site. It is, we are strictly a gardening and installation business, so we maintain gardens and we install gardens, and we design gardens.
How do they get into the, into that? No, there's a front door.
There's a front door, and then there's a door, um, right off the deck.
There's a stone patio that you step up the back steps.
There's a door right here, and then there's a front door. Well, we can walk, we can walk this way, we're anticipating that people will walk this way. Well, it's just employees, and we don't anticipate clients really ever coming there. We're used to being out in nature, we like it, we embrace it.
Is your own sewer system?
Yes, it currently has an existing well, and an existing sewer system that is a town connected into sewer systems.
Okay.
Yes.
But the water source is a well?
It is a well, and it is metered, so that the sewer rates are correctly.
We still pay for that for the, we still pay for the water.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Now, how does this idea of a rain garden work with gravel? I don't understand how the water gets to the rain garden.
Well, I think.
Either gravel is permeable or it's not permeable, or if it's not permeable, it'll go to the rain garden, if it's not permeable, you're covering a huge area with impermeable surface.
I agree.
So, item four is not permeable. Gravel is permeable, item four is not.
No, we're, we're putting gravel down, and Dave Klauser had said in his comments that he was concerned that gravel technically, you know, in engineering terms, has a larger runoff coefficient than grass. So, so as a result, he would anticipate that with this amount of gravel, that there would be some impact, that's what he was concerned about.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, that's, the idea of rain gardens are that you pitch, um, part paved or not met.
I know that, but what's the, what's the idea of the gravel then?
Well, he, he is the one that's concerned about that, and since I haven't spoken with him about it, um, this is, this is what we're offering as mitigation for that.
Well, I'm not sure what it mitigates, but this will be an issue of whether it's permeable or it's impermeable, and how it would work with a rain garden. Generally with gravel, especially if you have gravel hard enough to drive on, the, it, the water isn't gonna go to the rain garden.
Well, the, um, the larger aggregate, certain, which is I think what we're anticipating coming down, what you had on the driveway before, and, um, the, the aggregate really is permeable. It does wear over time, and some silts and sediments do build up in it over time, just, you know, from cars bringing injury or whatnot, but the thing, it's, I think it's the idea that, that if something is more, less permeable than grass, then I think that Dave, and I'm totally, you know, anticipating that this is what, where it is going with this comment, that since it is more, less permeable than grass, that you have to mitigate it in some measure. And so, I understand what you're saying, gravel is either permeable or non-permeable, but when you go through the engineering numbers, um, grass has a much lower coefficient of runoff than gravel, parking lots.
So, your point is that you don't think the rain guards will be enough mitigation for the sound?
I, I don't know if it will or not, I'm just expecting some engineering, it's not an open and shut thing, just because if you're a rain garden owner, it works, it's gotta be.
Yeah.
Yeah, it will.
Okay, but, I mean, yeah, I would guess as a landscape architect, why don't, why don't you do bricks for this much gravel, you go this much?
I would be certainly happy to do that, okay? We can, we can figure out how much a volume of runoff would technically be, you know, coming off of this gravel area, and then design rain gardens for it.
Designed to get the water from the driveway, oh, from gravel to the rain garden.
The grading won't be difficult, because the back is so incredibly flat, so it'll be very easy to get it pitched in the right direction.
Are you going to be using it as an office only, or office and residence?
Oh, no, just an office.
Just an office.
I believe that we always take an easement for sidewalk.
Okay.
It doesn't matter if there's one there, wherever like for the D1.
Okay.
We don't have to go back if you ever want.
Sure, and I think that that would probably be part of the whole. Sure. And I think that that would probably be part of the whole right-of-way thing, right?
Yeah, I think that's.
We have notes for those two things.
Excellent, great.
Okay, two questions. For any site plan, um, the requirement for electric vehicle charging station. Let me get back at it. Do we really need twenty-five spaces?
We do. I, my business booms in the spring and I have a lot of them placed.
Okay. Are there any surprises?
When we were making the site plan, I was like, wow, we might use every single one of those spaces.
But not all year?
Not all year, just for, you know, a couple of months. And then we have a, an average of about fifteen full-time employees.
For the electric vehicle charging station, we can do what CBS did and say that you don't want to build them. They tell other people in town to build them so you see what they look like first. Just throw it out there. That's things other applicants have done.
Would that go over well?
No.
How with some people?
Generally, what, what we're seeing and, um, i- is that of running, again, not building the, the charging station out there, but putting the conduit in, um,
You're ready for it.
To be ready.
Okay.
There's also, uh, different kinds of charging stations or charging facilities. Some are for residential use. In this particular setting, perhaps there's only one or two cars that might be charging and you can plug them in. It's gonna be there all day, right?
Yeah.
You're gonna come in and leave it with the van and come back at the end of the day. So you don't need that kind of fast charging that takes place at a hotel or a restaurant?
Right.
You can do a residential charging type of facility, which is basically a plug-in wall that can be accessed from the outside. So you could make that amenity available if one of your, uh, clients or your, um, employees does have electric vehicle and it's not that expensive.
Okay.
It's better than saying nothing at all.
Where is the charging station in Moon Falls? Is there, do we have one?
It's one on campus.
Frito-Lay.
Oh, right, in the parking lot.
The Frito-Lay?
They have five for their trucks.
Oh, wow. So is there a requirement as far as location?
Uh, no, it's acceptable to the planning board.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a suggestion? I was thinking the garage, maybe? We can run conduit to the garage just to have it there.
Well, you're not counting the garage as parking, so it would be something.
No, 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 outside of the garage, right.
Yeah. There'd have to be a location that, uh, in all the parking space that could be wired up for, uh, electrical vehicle charging.
Okay.
Okay, and, and generally looking, you're gonna build a parking lot. What we're trying to do is get the stuff in the ground before you know that
Oh, sure.
it can be part of it there. You don't have to go up and actually put in a charging station yet, but you have to have a mechanism for it.
Okay.
Can I ask, um, is this a private platform for the city?
Yes, it is. It's a school, yes.
Well, you know, based on my experience with private drivers, uh, private drivers get more and more fast. I think that's a lot of problems. You know, you do that or replace, um, in the beginning, if you were, if you ground used the road, a lot of times you gotta do flowers pushed out across the road. And I think there's a rather mess. It's one of the biggest suggestions, I think, is to get keep some of our underground surface nearly power-stoned, somewhat in distance.
I couldn't hear the last name you said, I'm sorry.
Just a suggestion, you know, you want to do black, I don't want to do black option.
Oh, so it's the apron, you mean? Oh, okay.
Grabber mess on the road. You know, we have to think about winter too.
Yes, of course. Actually, very limited use in winter.
I was thinking that we were discussing.
Yeah, very limited.
Maybe we're planning for winter.
Yeah. Yeah, right, exactly. Yeah. Yeah, I would think that, uh, people won't be plowing out into the road. And we've kind of created, when we were figuring out the whole layout of the parking lot, we talked a lot about where the snow was gonna be plowed after the last two winters.
Oh, yeah.
We're very aware of that. And then, um, I don't imagine they'll ever be plowing out into the road. I mean, I think that's illegal, right? They're not allowed to do that.
My guy doesn't do it.
I don't do it.
Oh, good. My guy doesn't do it. The guy across the street does it to me, though.
But there are people.
Oh, yes, there are.
I was trying to say economically, this has nothing to do with there, is that you're gonna have a lot of gravel prepared each block.
Yes, I think economically, I'm getting this approved by the planning board, it'd be a lot harder, so it's, it's.
As long as you're working on it.
Yeah, I'm aware of it. I also have a tremendous amount of labor. You know, we have, you know, ten to twenty employees who are gonna be excited for that spring gravel breaking workout to get into the market season. So, we'll be able to clean it up real fast.
Do you recommend economic alternatives? Since?
No, I mean, just. But we could potentially do the apron if that was something that you were concerned about. That would be very economically.
I mean, I was suggesting that the road, we used to drive away, people will have to deal with the gravel.
Yeah, and that's always a tough spot.
You gotta work with gravel yourself.
Right, yeah.
There's, um, there's this area.
Okay. Someone further down my list?
Bike racks, bike racks.
I know if I said, if I. I know.
Oh, a bike rack? Sure, yeah. We actually have people that use.
Yeah, we have people that bike around regularly.
There is a standard, uh, detail for the bike racks that's available from the bike ped community and probably through the
Okay.
secretary.
Okay.
It's not all bike racks are created as well.
Yes, I, I agree.
And there's. There, there's no lighting on site proposed?
No, because we don't do permanent in the dark.
Verify what you think.
Don't your office people come out of the office? I mean, it's dark by the time you leave.
We don't really work out.
We're not really.
Your office is completely closed, you mean?
People take fish. It's very, very light.
Yeah. All, all of them, it's a site plan, I have to send it to county.
There are floodlights on, I believe, on the corner of the garage and on two corners of the.
So I need, on this plan, identify where the lights are on the plan.
Okay.
Show detail.
And a little bit of detail of the photometrics.
Okay.
Where it's from. County is always a good for that.
If you might want a light, it's probably better to go through the site plan with you and take care of it now than have to come back.
Sure, yeah, there are floodlights right on the, right where someone would walk to the parking lot.
Well, the county, the county mayor may not have comments about continuing those. They don't, they have preferences about lights.
Right.
Okay.
One of the questions will always come up is, when it goes to counties, is there any lights? Yes, there are. Where are they? What is the, um, photometrics of the layout of it? For them to draw the exact score right to the end.
Okay.
Okay. Um, George, I got, you know, we got, it's a non-conforming lot. But we're proposing to put parking spaces and driveway in the setback.
Within the setback, or in the setback, do you mean?
Within the set, the side yard setbacks.
Which is not a violation of the state of the standard. You can't increase non-conformities. The fact that you have a side yard doesn't prevent you from putting parking in the side yard. It's the front yard that is prohibited. So you can't put parking in the front yard. I don't think there's an issue with putting parking in the side yard.
All right, so that's why I wanted to check, because we're, we're, usually when we get a non-conforming lot, we try to make it move towards more conforming. In this case, we're moving to, we're gonna, there's still gonna be non-conformal, if you understand. Could you tell me what sedimentation control fencing is?
Silt fencing, to control the silt. So when we clear the grass area, I wanted to have silt fencing up around the trees so none of the equipment would go near the trees. And also to, around the edge of the parking areas to prevent any potential erosion from happening when they're doing a parking lot.
When they're doing a parking?
Yes.
But is that meant to be there forever?
No, it's temporary, yes.
I, you know.
Would you want me to label it temporary?
No, I just wanted to get a clarification on it. You mentioned it and you're right as well, but I never saw it going away, so I didn't know if that was a permanent addition.
No, no, no.
You have an erosion control plan, as I recall, right?
Yes, I do.
And that will specify that it's gonna be removed at the end of site disturbance obstruction.
I will make sure that it says that, thank you.
All right, um, any other comments?
I have a comment, two comments, well, at least two. What is, uh, you're requesting various waivers, I believe? We need a written.
Yes.
Can you just clarify, after you talk with Dave, if you have that, if there's anything else that you need to waive or modify? Give us one letter with all those things and work to look at that.
Look at 14052, uh, site plan requirements on it. Take a look at what you've ever requested waivers from and then put them in a letter altogether.
What's in part of this?
There, there are waivers, there are some waivers indicating there, but there probably will be more. There will be at least.
Yeah.
Will be at least one more because 14034 requires that parking be paved. You can request a waiver of that.
Okay.
But you need to give the logic and rationale for it.
Okay.
One of the concerns is when you have paved parking, you put down stripes and you park within the stripes. You know where the spaces are.
Yeah.
When you have gravel, it's not quite as easy to figure out where things are going. Plus, you're gonna have vans, which are a little bit larger than average. So you need to make sure that everything can be accommodated in a gravel site. And, and explain to the board how that's gonna be done. Cause we're gonna be concerned that that's gonna expand over time. You have a trailer behind a van or something like that, suddenly, well.
Yeah.
So explain how you're gonna maintain the site control, the parking patrols. Talk to the building inspector about the ADA requirements.
Yes.
You have to show a site. That, I believe, will have to be paved. So we need to take that into account. And you'll need to, if you read through 14034H, there is, if you are not paving, you still have to provide insurance that it could be paved in the event, for some reason, it, it does not work out in the manner envisioned. So there's, if you look at 14034H2, that's a requirement for an agreement that will, um, basically provide for the situation irreverently if necessary.
I think that's why we should talk to the town board about changing the code.
Well, it was actually changed, it was actually changed from requiring paving, period. Because, for example, on, uh, Wilmorey, they were proposing some spaces would be reserved spaces.
Yeah.
And what this does is say, yeah, you can put them down as reserve. But if it turns out you actually do, do need those spaces, or for some reason, the unpaved, uh, surfaces are getting torn up, there's a mechanism to make sure it does get taken care of properly. So the board, the town, I believe, does have an interest in reducing the amount of paved surfaces where they have, you can't compromise the site operations and make sure that.
Well, I, the good thing is, is that it's only us on the site. It's not like a commercial site plan or a commercial facility. We, um, you know, the vans are anticipated to always park in the same locations, which typically, they do that now, they always park in the same locations in front of the barn. And, um, you know, we're all careful about each other's cars and everything, so I, you know, I understand what you're saying, that we need to provide that, but.
We need, we need an enforcement mechanism in the event you no longer are in control of the sites and what else is. And they don't have the same amount of, of, sort of, care about.
I see what you're saying, okay.
So you'll just tell us how it's gonna work and as long as it goes, we're good.
If I ask you about the, uh, the employees, if you're not a wanting to have them, but first thing I look at is heat oil room, then we can land bang some of those, but, you know, if you need it, that's why they're in there.
Yeah.
I can understand that.
Would you just make sure that the travel lanes are at least twelve feet wide, because that's what's required by code?
Yes, they are.
You might want to consider with vans backing out, whether you might need a little bit more?
Um.
So just, I.
I did make that wider on the back side.
Okay.
Because the vans are longer.
That's what I was.
I made them like, I made the spaces, uh, I believe they're twelve by twenty-two for the vans.
In your waiver request, you can show that you've taken that into account and explain how.
Thank you.
Okay, do you want to have any other questions, comments?
David indicated considering the site in the context of adjoining sites. Are there other residences along the stretch there?
There's, well, there is technically a residence next door, uh, in addition to logging operation, I don't know what they're doing. Um, catty corner across the street, I believe, is a residence and then further on up the street. And then closer across from the greenhouses, south of the, um, Sutrie Plant, there are some residences there as well.
So one of the concerns is when you have a lot of cars pulling in and out at one time. Probably isn't a major concern, well, it isn't a major concern given the hours you're proposing, the headlights and, you know, just seeing a bunch of cars parked in the backyard.
Yeah.
So sometimes.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes.
The hedges or something is helpful in breaking that up or minimizing it.
Um, you don't.
It's a consideration the board has to take into account, just the requirement of the LI district. So if, if, if that is an issue, that's one way to address it and again, you can explain it in your narrative.
Actually, where we have our parking lot, the residences that are nearby are actually pretty much in line with where this house is. So back here is where I took the, the pictures. You can see, um, the north side is the, the lot where I was staying.
The trailers and the log rooms.
So no one's, you know, um, residing there. And then on the other side is actually vacant, you know, a lot with nothing on it. And then the next one is, um, also looks like some sort of industrial-looking garage or something.
Very large garage, yeah.
It's not a house, you know, and so, um, that would be where headlights would face.
I don't think there's an issue. I'm looking at the, well, I doubt there are, uh, site.
Is that because the trees and vegetation are there? Cause one concern is sometimes you figure those trees are gonna be there and then for some reason they get.
There's no trees. The tree. Yeah, um, on page, on page three, you see next to the big lawn that we'd be turning into the parking lot. The north side is the, the white trailers and the dirt. And the south side is an open lot that, um, has nothing on it and then the garage in the back. But there actually aren't trees in between.
No, that's.
Either one of these spots, there's this tree, which is on our site.
So when you go through the LI requirements, you'll make determinations about whether it applies?
Yeah, I mean, we can look at, I think we have an issue. There is a heck of a lot of room, uh, where the parking is to put trees in front of the settee. And there's a huge tree next door, right? Big one there.
On our lot?
Is that not the.
Those are the two big spruce, they're right on the property line.
They're right on property? I wasn't sure where the line was.
Yeah, they're right on the line. That dog pen is right underneath there. So you also have to keep in mind that, um, we don't anticipate really being, um, there, operational in the dark hours. Because the guys come back, the field crews, it's not all guys, the field crews come back typically, you know, no later than six-thirty and they're gonna be gone and there's not really gonna be using headlights, so.
I think in the narrative, you kind of alluded to that. But I think it's, would be helpful just to, to that narrative really to to talk about the daily work on it, but, um, just getting another couple of sentences about the nature of the business, the seasonality of it, rain, fall, summer, non-winter, that type of thing on it that, um.
Okay.
Cause here, here, I mean, the hour is seven-thirty differently than even six-thirty. But what you're really getting into is what's going on, which is that it's, that we don't do a heck of a lot in the winter. And all I wanna do is just try to capture that kind of seasonality.
Okay.
When a business starts up in the spring and, um, how you bring it on and how you make it work.
I, I edited that down because I read that it said it should be kept to one page. And I absolutely couldn't even keep it to one page, so I like knocked it back from like three to like one, two, like a little over one. So I'm sorry, I'll be happy to add it in.
Considering what we have to read on an all basis, three bases in order, I think.
No, should we reduce the font even more?
Okay, that's good, yes.
All right.
Is this, is this the shed you're talking about?
Probably not, I don't think.
That's gonna be installed.
What was it?
No, this is existing. That's existing. There's, right now, there's a shed right back here on the back side. Right here, we need to take that out. And this, right. And this, right here, this coop in the fenced area.
This is interesting too.
That's existing, it's cinder block, we're going to, we're going to keep it.
Oh, so this is.
It's existing, yeah.
Do you keep equipment on site, like back hose or other mechanical equipment?
No, just the hands. I don't really do that.
We don't have large scale equipment, it's all like hand tools.
No.
If we need like, you know, if we're installing walkways and you need a compactor, we go rent a compactor for a day, bring it right to the site. Because our stuff, our work is such site-specific work that there's very little of it here. It's just that we need to consolidate all of the operations on locations to increase the efficiency of the business.
Are you going to be keeping mulch panels or stuff like that?
We have a delivered range of project sites.
What's on the site plan is what's going to be used and nothing else.
Yes, and it'll look nicer than it does now.
Okay. I think we gave you some things we're looking to get. Obviously, as soon as you get it to us quicker, it will have to go to county for the site plan. They meet once a month. But I think some of the issues that we raised here, if you can take care of them, those are the same things that were there on the county. The lighting, I didn't guarantee the lighting on it, the ADA blocking. And for us, we'll need the waivers for the written out. About to get Dave to sign off. Basically, all we do is try to track what we just talked to you about. So we have a record of it, you have a record of it. I know you're taking copies of those from Ben and I, and that's why somebody else like that. But we can do a copy of this, he asked you to sign it. It's just a summary of our discussion today. And if you have any questions or you have to get better concrete, I think you've basically got what we've talked about.
I'll take a picture of yours.
I'm in there.
So one of the things that actually Dave Klauser had mentioned was he requested that we complete the DEC EAF.
Right.
And I went through and I was looking at it today and I did with the mapper technology that they have. And it came up that, that the site has a wetland on it and it doesn't. I went to the county parcel and I actually had Kelly check it as well with her records. And I had included this in the original package with the EAF as an attachment. And I'm a little concerned that this is coming up. And we, you know, we're not even in a buffer. So this is.
Well, it's have to say.
It's part of the original package that we had submitted to you folks. So, um, so I'm concerned that he wants us to do this and yet it's going to be checked yes for wetlands. And I used to flag wetlands and I've walked all over the site, there are no wetlands on the site. I didn't walk on the adjoining properties, but there's dirt to the north and it's basically a field to our south. There were not any wetland species apparent to me. So, you know, this is a little concerning to me.
When Dave gets back next week, follow up with him on that and we'll see where we address that on it. You could have a wetlands inspector walk out there and flag anything if there was the site. We have used one.
Okay.
And so except that we don't have. I would, I would rather talk to Dave about what you saw first and determine what his view on it. And if he thinks we should get somebody out there, we'll get somebody out there. But that's all we did.
Sure. I'm sorry, if we go to that, I'll stay, right?
Well, no, you got to go back pretty far, property.
Yeah, well, it was up this.
Yeah, it was up a little bit.
Yeah.
And then.
And then it's pretty much the end of our property.
That's the end of the property?
Yes, the end.
That's why I thought when.
It's 1.3 acres.
Yeah, it's not that big.
I had to drive out, so I got there after you took all your pictures of it.
Are you there today?
Yeah. So if anybody called you upset, says somebody walking around the property.
It's vacant.
But I looked at it going all the way back to it.
That's really.
And so, it did look like that.
So as far as Dave Klauser's comments, are we going to get a formal letter from him?
When he gets back, he'll follow us up.
Okay.
Okay? But you have the information that he was talking about. He usually tags them up, but like everything else, we're right off to vacation. Go get him back. So he'll, he'll back up the letter, we'll.
We can address it all in the meantime.
Right.
So timeline?
Timeline. I would think that if you were able to address these issues and get it back to us, we could probably send it to county for August. I'll give you about when we have to get it to county, I'm looking at the boss.
Usually ten days.
It's usually ten, but it's probably, yeah, I'll say twenty-second, twenty-third. If you got to us, we could forward it to county, get it on a county agenda for August.
Oh, okay.
Okay? I only meet once a month on the first Wednesday of the month, so if you, if you don't get it then it's September. Well, we'll get it back from them and, and put you on the August meeting.
And so to be on the August meeting means we go over our list, what we found over, and then it happens.
Well, we've met all the requirements and the board.
Well, there may be a wetland delineation that's needed, depends on what Dave says, I guess.
Well, well, I think that's, that will be ongoing, that we're not, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
It's not an argument.
If we haven't done, sent an inspector out and hope it delineated, if there's nothing appearing going on, we'll take a look at it. If we finish with everything, we can approve the site plan.
Okay.
Okay?
So that is possible for the August meeting? I have, I have everything contingent upon this approval, right? So I'm working this.
I, your whole argument, I had it fully.
Also, we also don't think we approve subjects of leaving certain things, you know?
If we get to the end, if that's, if we get to the end of August and the board says, okay, it really looks good, but you haven't done this, this and this.
Okay.
And then they say, conditioned upon that being done, we authorize the chairman to sign off on your two things.
I'd probably still wait to sign the marriage papers till you have that approval.
I don't blame you. I don't blame you. But that's, that's kind of a timeframe we're going to push it to, to site plan and it has certain requirements to go through.
Yeah, well, we'll get the county approval first and then.
So what, because all, the goal is for really to get it back to us before Wednesday so we can send it up to county. Address as much as you can of what, what you have here. So they can at least look at it and make a determination. Then we can get it back to our meeting and then we can say, Ray. We already added.
We have added.
Yep. Yep. We, we have, Ray, I find out there are certain favorites that people have here, like.
Like that? We're good with that.
That's good, yeah.
Side by side, we're good with that.
So everybody has their own unique flavors. Unless he didn't get you to go to a fire department. But.
Does a fire truck have access?
The event.
Well, with our twenty-four foot access.
Should be able to get a truck.
I don't think so.
I would certainly.
Okay, so that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, very good.
Are there additional copies necessary for the county?
Want to be sent to the county, you got to send.
Yeah, I need an additional copy, I didn't have the two that was.
Oh, okay, so you want like two additional copies then?
Yes.
Okay.
And the photos that you submitted tonight, have you got copies of those to the county?
Yes.
Put your lighting on. Put the lighting details on?
Yes, lighting, I got that, yes, thank you.
And if you have any questions, what you're putting together, what else did I do or didn't do, give us a hint, okay?
Thank you very much.
Did you also, this one, this note here on the erosion control plan, should be on the site plan, it's the hours of operation.
Okay, sure.
Put it since it's consistent with the narrative, the narrative says seven-thirty.
Yeah, it was, okay.
So whatever's on the site plan is going to control.
Yeah. It's the, the hours of operation on the erosion control plan need to go on this thing. And be consistent with the narrative.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Church is going to lay out a procedure for review of her, for the line. CBS, how, how to review this. How we're going to review the product.
Sitting in front, so. This is better than having everybody get up tomorrow like this. So I thought it would be helpful if we started, see, and think about how you're going to be doing secret site plan review for, not just for CBS. You're going to have the same issues with Moham, looking at the nature of the activity and deciding if it's significant enough to require preparation of an EIS or not. But it is also helpful to you to understand what that determination does require and what it doesn't require in terms of our application. So when you do secret, you start from the larger actions that have long-form EIS with the part two. Part two has eighteen or so specific questions and then sub-questions under that. Your responsibility is to go through part two, determine if the impacts are nonexistent or small or large or moderate. For larger moderate, you get to go through more analysis and review in the part three. Large by itself does not mean you get to do an EIS or you require the applicant to do an EIS. But it does mean you go through and do that more extensive analysis that is set forth in the secret regulations and in the EAF itself. So you go through and you look at the context in which this large impact is happening. You look at the magnitude of the impact, you look at the severity of the impact. And then, then you make a determination of significance. The determination of significance is one of two things. Either you are required, the applicant is required to prepare an EIS and go through all the analysis that that entails. I think most of you guys have experienced the part point EIS, that resulted. But the other possibility is you make a determination of negative significance or you don't require the EIS. That does not stop your process, it doesn't stop your review opportunity to look at the site plan, the actual land use application and determine whether it meets the requirements of the code. The example I was talking to Mike about, when I thought this might be useful is a few years ago, the Morri, the Morriarni parcel, which is down along Springtown, it's down in the flood plain, if you wanted to create two additional lots at various points, they had road to give access to those lots with three to four feet of water on it for flooding events. Which resulted in, it was evidence presented to the board that at one point the ambulance squad had to use a four-wheeler to access the property over the railroad bridge during winter. That's not something which is encouraged. And the code requires that you look at that from a subdivision standpoint. And the board's conclusion after that, even though there was a big gap, was that the impact of that site and the danger represented to emergency services and difficulty in access required denial of the application. And that determination was held up after a lawsuit. So the EIS question is one step in the process. Once you made your determination, doesn't mean that you're approving the project, doesn't mean that you've reached conclusions about the site plan, parts of it. But it does mean only one thing, that environmental impact data is not required because some information is available to you and your analysis of that. But what I thought was, instead of trying to do this always with one thing, is to follow also the process that we worked out on the Wilmerite finding statement, taking sections and working through some of the easier sections first. And then leaving the ones where there's either new information or big issues to consider for less. Because you want to have, for example, the letter CBS talks about the need for architecture that reflects the character of the community. If there is going to be a response to that, you want to consider that when you do the part of the EAF that deals with community character, it's not much point in doing the analysis, making determination and have CBS come back to something that actually is useful and perhaps suitable. Doesn't mean they will, doesn't mean they won't. But as long as you have eighteen of these different things to go through and you have to consider all the different issues that have been raised in the course of the public hearings, it's an opportunity to sort of divide it into bite-sized chunks. So I didn't realize Dave was going to be at the meeting, but my suggestion would be if, as we go through this, Dave and I could work to organize this into the more tractable, easier, not necessarily completely, but try to prioritize it with that, with that in mind that we can probably go through one-third or half of the questions in a fairly linear manner, come to a conclusion and we can move on to spend more time with more interesting questions.
Well, the concern is that the applicant needs to revise the EAF so that we can have accurate information to give away these determinations. Is that, I mean, I think last time, my professor said, are we listening to what information we need to do secret? Is that what we're asking?
Well, no, I think what I was looking at is what issues do we have outstanding? But when we're doing, going through the secret determination of certain areas on it, we'll highlight that. I fully expect that CBS is there in response to the issues that were raised at the various public hearings and will be. and will be submitting that, um, shortly, so I, uh, we'll have a-
We'll have more in them.
More in them.
I just wanted to say, based on accuracy, uh, the statement on the strike term of no one was to be able to use to, um, rescue a gentleman from a bad anxiety attack.
Who's saying TV's?
He would actually put a pickup truck and drive him on the rail trail. And the police normally patrol the rail trail on four-wheelers, for a transit, so they're not, it's not legal for them, and the rescue squad does not have four-wheelers.
We're not gonna re-arrange that, right?
On the side, there's an accuracy of the case.
All right, um, the next thing I have, um, so I'm gonna let George and Dave work up to 18 areas and kind of list them, prioritize them. If you have a lot of, and I mean, there's certain big ones that we're gonna wait for the end to discuss, we'll have a discussion on that, some of the other ones. And let them know what areas, um, we have, so we'll, we'll spend some time discussing each of the areas. But again, I fully expect, um, we have a continuation of the public hearing into August and, um, I expect some updated responses from the applicant to address the issues that have been raised at the public hearing. I don't want to start now, I want him to do something, uh, first, rather than start and then I want to send a hand you-
Yeah.
Okay?
Question about last, last meeting.
Last, last?
Yeah.
July 7th, uh, uh, June, or 20th?
22nd, I think it was.
June 22nd.
Um, okay, so George handed out that paper about, what's it, ex-party, ex-party, ex-par-
Ex-porte.
Ex-porte.
Yeah, okay, communications, and I was very confused about it, so I did a lot of research, um, about what the EIs and whatnot. So, the paper that he handed out only applies to the future, I just wanna discuss with the board in front. Um, I mean, we're citizens, we can talk to anyone about any project, anytime. Um, we can obviously represent the board, you know, since we're citizens. Um, but, I mean, there's nothing in the law against people coming to us and talking about projects, us having that project. We can't, you know, obviously, wheel and deal or anything. But there's nothing that says that we're, we're not sub-citizens of the town who can talk about projects. So I just wanna confirm that with, with, you know, with everything.
The issue is that not, there's no legal prohibition, you're correct. The question though of continuing to provide assurance to both applicants and the public that there is a fair and unbiased process taking place is really what that was intended to address. So, for example, if, if someone is meeting with an applicant at a restaurant and you see the-
But what you heard that was about meeting with applicants mostly, and, but then what you talked about was meeting with just members, just other citizens.
I think, yeah, I-
And just them discussing one-on-one conversations, which, the way these presented to the board, I think made it sound very much like you can't talk to anyone ever about anything, and I just wanna confirm that that is-
There's, there is, I'm told that Southwestern Airlines has an employee manual that's like one sentence long that says use good judgment at all times.
Exactly, yeah.
And that's something that board members need to take into account. So regardless of what they are intending to do, the perception that you're talking to an applicant, you're talking to the public, member of the public, outside of, put outside of the meeting context.
Yeah.
You, it's not to say you can't do that, it's not to say that if someone walks up, you can't have a conversation about an issue of concern for them, but it does put somewhat of a obligation on you to disclose that conversation. Say, I hit me with an applicant last year, we talked about the wetlands inspection, uh, and it was something concerning. I just wanted to put it on the record, that's what we talked about.
Well, you get so scared of a perception that you don't do your job well, that you, you know, if you used to talk to people like that.
It's not, it's not to not do your job, it's to disclose, particularly when, listen, for example, if you were to deny an application because you know something about the property, if you don't disclose that and the applicant doesn't have a chance to respond to it, it could be the, the-
Of course, yeah.
Well, it's not of course, that's the problem. There is, litigation takes place about things like that, where the board votes, it doesn't set forth the reasons. There is a reason, and, you know, there's affidavits that are submitted at the, in the R278 that say, well, we knew this, we knew that, but it wasn't on the record before, uh, the court, that's before the board, before the court. And the problem is, the applicant can't respond and investigate. You say, well, you said there was a dump there, what we investigated, we looked, we found nothing there, or we found something, but it wasn't what you thought was being a dump.
Well, that's impossible, okay.
But that's really the point. It's not to say that you can't, it's to say what you do. You have to take some precautions to make sure the process does remain fair to everybody who's involved.
I mean, I guess I'm saying, if someone walks up to me on the street and says, oh, you know, CBS doesn't pay their, pay their employees well, I'm not gonna come here and say, some random person I don't know told me this thing, and disclose it immediately, and it's included, but, okay.
I mean, just saying that, you know, I've been having conversations before, et cetera. No, it puts it on, it puts it in the record, that's it.
Okay, all right, great.
I think a lot of times, and obviously, uh, being playing board members, people come up to you all the time and ask about specific projects or what's going on, and all I try to do is be, uh, open mine and listen to whatever they have to say, hey? I generally run neutral because I'm still evaluating the information on the seizure.
Yeah.
We haven't come up with a conclusion on it, but it's not to prevent you from having that conversation, or be open to that.
That's a lot how it's happening, so that's why I wanted to discuss it, okay?
I think it's just really, you gotta be, because if you went out and rented and raved on the project, I think that's, I mean, outside of meeting or anything, that's, that didn't raise, that you're totally against that project, the applicant said your bias because I haven't really looked at all the information.
Yeah, of course.
We hit, we're still submitting information, and you were in, made a frequency, this is, you know, okay? It's, it's an obvious fact, but, no, you can't walk around that, uh, somebody coming up to you talking about, uh, a project. We have, we have such low-key projects right now on a table right now, except when they, um, they're happy, but-
No matter which way you go, someone's gonna talk about it.
Yeah, the one end is out or the other end is out, I think. Okay, uh, I would like, um, Kelly sent that, uh, email at the end of the day today, uh, asking you about the availability for the August half meeting. She conceded that by telling you that, uh, well, Kelly and I, uh, will be on vacation and Adele will be out also. We have two large public hearings, we have two public hearings scheduled for that day. And so I just want, get back to Kelly, uh, whether you're gonna be there or not, I don't know. Put a public hearing on it and then set up for her, and we don't have a forum for her. So, she raised the issue because she has the hardest round, but the logistics of getting this room, getting the chairs out, getting, uh, bikes set up and everything else is, uh, she doesn't have time, I'll put it down myself. Let her know, and, um, if, if we're not gonna have a call, we'll make a decision after next week to run your public hearing, but I'd like you to get back to, um, on that. Other than that, that's all I have for today. I have a motion to adjourn.